Good evening. Do we have any apologies for absence? councillor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. councillors Butch, Moore and Wilson.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Agenda item two, to hear the roll call of members and to receive declarations of interest under the council's code of conduct.
councillor Julie Aviet. councillor Jonathan Bird. councillor Bronwyn Brooks. councillor Liz Burnett. councillor George Carroll. councillor Christine Cave. councillor Janice Charles.
present and nothing to declare.
councillor Millie Collins.
present and nothing to declare.
councillor Jeff Cox.
present and nothing to declare.
councillor Robert Crowley. councillor Pamela Drake. councillor Vince Driscoll. councillor Stuart Edwards. councillor Ben Gray. councillor Owen Griffiths. councillor Stephen Griffiths. councillor Sally Hanks. councillor Nick Hodges. councillor Hunter Jarvie. councillor Gwyn John. councillor Ian Johnson. councillor Gordon Kemp. councillor Peter King. councillor Kevin Marney. councillor Catherine McCaffery. councillor Neil Moore. councillor Michael Morgan. councillor Jane Norman. councillor Rachel Nugent-Finn. councillor Andrew Parker. councillor Bob Penrose. councillor Sandra Perks. councillor Andrew Robertson. councillor Leighton Rollins. councillor Ruba Sevignyannum. councillor John Thomas. councillor Neil Thomas. councillor Stefan Willian.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Do we have any apologies for absence? councillor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. councillors Butch, Moore and Wilson.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Agenda item two, to hear the roll call of members and to receive declarations of interest under the council's code of conduct.
councillor Julie Aviet. councillor Jonathan Bird. councillor Bronwyn Brooks. councillor Liz Burnett. councillor George Carroll. councillor Christine Cave. councillor Janice Charles.
present and nothing to declare.
councillor Millie Collins. councillor Geoff Cox. councillor Robert Crowley. councillor Pamela Drake. councillor Vince Driscoll. councillor Stuart Edwards. councillor Ben Gray. councillor Owen Griffiths. councillor Stephen Griffiths. councillor Sally Hanks. councillor Nick Hodges. councillor Hunter Jarvie. councillor Gwyn John. councillor Ian Johnson. councillor Gordon Kemp. councillor Peter King. councillor Kevin Marney. councillor Catherine McCaffery. councillor Neil Moore. councillor Michael Morgan. councillor Jane Norman. councillor Rachel Nugent-Finn. councillor Andrew Parker. councillor Bob Penrose. councillor Sandra Perks. councillor Andrew Robertson. councillor Leighton Rollins. councillor Ruba Sevignyannum. councillor John Thomas. councillor Neil Thomas. councillor Stefan Willian. councillor Margaret Wilkinson. councillor Eddie Williams. councillor Marguerite Wright.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item three, which is for approval, the Cardiff Capital Regional City Deal, the Joint Working Agreement Business Plan, reference from Cabinet on the 19th of March 2018.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members will be aware that this report was presented to Cabinet on the 19th of March with a reference on to council for consideration. The reason why this report is coming here tonight is straightforward. The agreement of the city deal five-year business plan is a matter that has not been delegated to the Cardiff Capital Region Cabinet, hence the need for ten councils to agree. This is an issue which has been considered by various partner councils over recent weeks. Merthyr was the first of the ten councils to approve, followed by Newport, who approved the plan on Monday of this week, Cardiff Thursday of last week, Wylney Gwent Thursday of last week, and Monmouth also approved the plan last week. I know where the others, including Torvine, RCT, Bridgend and Cefili, are also considering the matter today. Although there is considerable detail in the body of the report, the only matter that requires a decision is that of the business plan. Much of the detail within the report is included for context. So in terms of context, the report sets out the background to the city deal. It provides context by referring to the early work on the city deal, which led to the signing of the heads of terms by the ten constituent councils in the spring of 2016, signed on behalf of this council by councillor Neil Moore, the leader at the time. As members will be aware, the joint working agreement was signed on the first of March 2017. Finally, in terms of context, this report is necessary as the JWA requires that the business plan be agreed by all councils. In other words, it is not devolved matter to the regional cabinet. That takes me to the business plan itself, which is appended to the report in front of you. The first thing to say is that the plan is deliberately high-level and visionary. There is some detail in the plan, but also flexibility. And there has to be flexibility because, as a region, we must be fleet of foot to new and emerging challenges. It does not talk of site-specific projects, given that any project will have to be assessed against detailed assessment criteria in order to be considered for city deal funding. Everyone will appreciate from the context that the city deal heads of terms was compiled around thematic interventions, not site-specific projects, and this is the reason why site-specific projects have not been factored into the first five-year business plan. The exception to this has been the investment decision taken to enable the city deal cabinet to invest in the compound semiconductor cluster in Newport, given the regional cabinet decision made to support that cluster. Pages eight to nine set out the aims, which are high-level for the next five years, envisaged as part of the business plan. It clarifies that the first investment has already been made into the semiconductor cluster, with other high-level investments including digital innovation, skills, metro and strategic sites, as well as a housing fund to kick-start housing investment. Page 10 sets out the strategic regional objectives, which are as follows: prosperity and opportunity, inclusion and equality, and identity, culture, community and sustainability. These are detailed further on pages 12 and 13. Page 18 sets out spatial priorities identified in the business plan, and page 19 identifies Barry as strategic hub and identifies the presence of the enterprise zones, including the airport and St Athan. In terms of strategic objectives, the business plan follows the strategic objectives as set out in the heads of terms agreed on the first of March 2016. Page 20 deals with the skills agenda, and this is deliberately non-spatial, all cross-cutting in nature and policy-based. Page 22 relates to innovation, reference to investment around semiconductors and also public sector testbed, given the region's reliance on public sector employment, and also focus on regional business support. Page 24 refers to the transport and connectivity agenda, referring to ongoing work on a regional transport strategy, with mention of strategic opportunities around the airport, the Great Western Main Line and also the ports, including Barry. Page 25 refers to Metro Plus and makes reference to the proposed investment in Cardiff Central, given the need to improve sustainable access into and out of the capital. Page 26 refers to other future initiatives, including access to the airport and strategic access to the M4 in the context of the airport. Page 27 refers to the digital strand, referencing fibre connectivity both regionally and internationally, and page 28 refers to the housing and regeneration objective, including regional housing fund, and this also includes reference to the visitor economy, and page 33 mentions Barry Island. The plan also refers to other potential funding opportunities and the review process to be undertaken by the regional cabinet. So in conclusion, the matter for this council is simply acceptance and agreement of the business plan, which I hope we will get tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have any questions? Vincent Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for that, Leader. Just a couple of questions. Firstly, obviously, with a city deal, infrastructure is very high on the agenda, and can you reassure the chamber and the people of Dines powers and the wider Vale that the Dines powers bypass would be one of your bids?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Driscoll. As with junction 34, members will be aware that we are currently carrying out well-tag appraisals for the Dines powers bypass. A report is going to the next cabinet meeting regarding extending the scope of the Dines powers study at the request of the Dines powers Community Council. I must say at this point that city deal is unlikely to fund this project in full, but if the preferred option for the well-tag process is a bypass, there may well be a role for city deal in enabling the scheme with additional Welsh government funding.
councillor Neil Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I formally second the leader's proposal? As someone who was really involved in setting up the city deal originally, this is the right way forward. This is, as John said, the skeleton bones of the plan, the business plan, and as we progress with the business plan, schemes will come forward. They obviously have to be audited and assigned to the various committees in order to look at it, and then the city cabinet can look at it. I have absolutely no doubt that this is important for this council, for this region, and I am happy to second the motion.
Thank you, councillor Moore. councillor Ian Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the leader for his introduction. Thank you also for the briefing that you gave to group leaders a few weeks ago, which was very helpful in setting the context for the work that we're discussing tonight. Councillors who weren't here before last May, well, councillors who were here before last May will know that Ploughcymru last year voted against the city deal when it came to us here for two specific reasons. The first was that it had no democratic mandate, because it was in front of a council which had three months left to run, and it had, and therefore signing up for something that would be 25 years beyond the political life of most people who were in the chamber at that time, felt wrong, it felt wrong to us to support something that would, when we go into the public a few months later, to ask for their position. So it would have been an opportunity not to have done it before May, but have done, asked for it at that May time. The second reason, and this is perhaps more something which still concerns me, is really about the amount of money that is involved and how effective it will be. It's about the gap between the rhetoric of the transformational city deal that's being suggested to us and the amount of money that's actually there. Because what we're talking about here in the city deal is 1.229 billion over the period, 734 million of that is already attached to the metro, and then another 495 million is the wider investment fund, which is part of the business plan that we are here to approve or not tonight. That 495 million pounds is not a great deal of money, because if you think about the context of our own annual budget, which is a turnover of 350 million, then expecting 495 million across 10 local authorities in a quarter of a century to be a game changer is, I think, going a little bit too far. That's not to disagree with the concept, the work and what's, you know, the excellent work that is going on, but it is to say that rather like the objective one funding that Wales had for a number of years from Europe to suggest that this actually solves all of our problems is, I think, a little bit mistaken. So I think it's important that we, you know, we perhaps rein in some of the, you know, the spin and the rhetoric that surrounds what's actually a fairly small amount of long-term money. You compare that to the amount of money that's circulating amongst those 10 local authorities, you compare that to the Welsh Government budget, and 495 million pounds is not actually that substantial. I say that although we will be supporting this tonight, because what I do think is good is that of the 11 sites named in the spatial plan there, there are 11 sites, 10 local authorities and two of those in the Vale of Glamorgan. So I think this hopefully is an indicator that we will be getting something very special out of this, and I'm sure that's what the leader and the chief executive will be trying to do as we go forward. I'm not sure quite how this is going to work, and this is a very high-level document, perhaps necessarily so at this stage, but the devil will be in the detail, the devil will be in the implementation. And when we see these things happening and coming through, they go through the three stages of the outlined business case, et cetera, then I think we'll be very interested to see what happens. And I would, of course, welcome an undertaking, because these things will not be coming back necessarily to full council here, although I'm sure they'll be reported to Cabinet and to Corporate Resources and Performance. I would like an undertaking from the lead that he will be ensuring cross-party consensus on anything that does go forward from this council towards the cabinet whenever that's possible, so keeping us all in the loop and making sure that we are happy. And I'm aware that Bridgend, I think, have passed it this afternoon, and whether my colleagues in Bridgend and the Ploughcymru Group there voted against it, because it wasn't able to secure areas of funding, for example, north of the M4 for the Vale's communities. So those things are, you know, strong concerns that people have that they will as capable not be as good as it could be, will not be as effective as it could be. 495 million pounds is not an awful lot of money. It's good to pump prime, you know, these things, but if you're talking about a leverage with the private sector that's actually an eight-to-one ratio, then you have to wonder what needs the public sector taxpayers' money going into this is actually doing, when the private sector could be doing it without us putting that money in. So there are an awful lot of concerns that I have about this going forward. I'm putting them to one side for the moment, because the state, the position this is in is very much, I think, await and see what effect, what impact this has. I am a little concerned about the quality assessment that we have here, and the whole loads of areas which just say as above. It seems to me very much that the, because the nature of the city deal and how it's been set up in the context of growth, orthodox economic growth targets, I do wonder how that's really going to fit in with the Wellbeing Future Generations Act, and I would welcome.
Thirty seconds, councillor Johnson.
There's reference within the reports to working alongside the Future Generations Commissioner's office, and I think that would be helpful to have more information, if not at this meeting now, then in future, as to how that relationship is going to develop. Because if the targets for the gateway review, et cetera, are going to be related to orthodox economic growth indicators, then we maybe need to see how that actually fits along that, alongside that agenda from the Welsh Government. So as I say, the Ploughcymru Group will be supporting this tonight, but we have lots of concerns, lots of questions, and additionally, with regard to the metro, which is not part of this debate tonight, we were interested in how that will actually affect the Vale of Glamorgan and also, of course, the Dines powers bypass.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Leader?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Johnson. And can I thank councillor Moore for seconding the motion and pay tribute to the work that he did in actually bringing the city deal forward and getting the veil signed up to it last year. As councillor Johnson said, the Ploughcymru Group voted against it last year. I'm pleased to say that the Conservative group voted for it. Can't quite see the thinking behind the fact that it was so close to the election and that it was only three months left to run, because, as I say, there's a 25-year plan, there's only four years left to run of the administration now, but we're voting for it. But, so I think it's actually, I'm really pleased that you are on board tonight and going to vote with us to pass this. As you said, the amount of money isn't that significant, 495 million in the wider investment fund, but must say that most of this money is going to be invested as investments which will be repaid. There'd be very few grants, as far as I can see, given out. There is a chance of some grants for some of the enabling housing schemes, but they will be a last resort. It will be for investment, for the money to come back into the pot and to be reinvested. And the amount that we are actually putting forward, which is just over 17 million, is even less significant than the 495 million, and hopefully we should see a really good return on that for the Vale of Glamorgan. We're lucky enough to have a meeting at the semiconductor cluster this week, and it was stressed there that the decision to invest in a semiconductor cluster has already secured 500 jobs, which would have been lost there if we hadn't, if the city deal hadn't invested. And that's, you know, listening to them, it's really, they're really enthusiastic, and it looks as if it's going to be something really good going forward. And those jobs there are available to people in the Vale. It's, the idea of metro is to link up the areas within the South Wales area, so that jobs anywhere within the region are available to people from anywhere else within the region. So it's not all about what we can get for the Vale. It will be nice to think that we do get something directly, some direct involvement in the Vale, but it's not all about what we get in the Vale, it's about what the region gets and how we in the Vale can benefit from the region benefiting from city deal. I can assure you that we'll be bringing regular reports back to the Vale of Glamorgan council on the progress of city deal, as you say, through the scrutiny committee, and also quite happy to brief the leaders on a reasonably regularly basis, regular basis, when there is something to discuss. The point you made about, you know, do we really need to be putting this money in because the leverage is so great and how much we're trying to lever in from the private sector, but I think what it does show is a commitment from local government for these sort of schemes to go ahead and be successful. Your last point about the Future Generations Commissioner, and I know she's keeping an eye on us, and I'm sure we'll come back to you with future reports on how the city deal investments fit in with the Wellbeing Future Generations Act. So thank you very much.
Thank you, leader. councillor Gwyn John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we're delighted, Landhead First Group, to support the joint working agreement recommendation tonight. You have to be part of it to benefit, and it's important that the Vale of Glamorgan plays a big part in this. And obviously, everybody's going to be fighting their corner, wanting spending in their areas, of course they are, but at the same time, we've got the leader and the managing director representing the Vale of Glamorgan, and they'll be fighting our corner. I was fully supportive of the coalition, in the coalition group, when Neil was working for the city deal and first signing up for it, and quite honestly, nothing has changed. We're fully supportive and we need to move forward as a unit. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor John. councillor Neil Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, can I congratulate John, because he's just said everything and I've written down here. Well, no, the point is that it's never meant to be an issue to solve all of our problems, as was suggested. It's a pump prime, and it is a pump prime, and it's been successful, and I'm glad you've mentioned the semiconductors, John, because if I haven't a job, just if I haven't a job, no matter where they come from, they're all within our region. And more to the point, we took that decision knowing that we were owning the building where it was going to take place, and that that investment was going to come back to us with the option for them buying it off us afterwards. So it was actually pump priming, it was investment, it was actually going forward, it was producing a worldwide product using very high skills and using the skills of the people who live here in the region. And I wish, and it's something I said at the time, I wish people would get away from the fact that you'd have to look for plans and for investment or particular buildings or job opportunities within your own area. If it comes, yes, and we, and John, you're right, we argued quite strongly that we've got the port of Barry, we've got the airport, and we've got the enterprise zones. And that's our pump priming areas, as far as we're concerned. Now, if we didn't have them, it wouldn't matter, because what we hope is that investment will come forward, so people who live here will get jobs, and they will be able to buy houses, and they will be able to invest in our communities. So this is the whole point of it. It wasn't a case of, look what we are going to get out of it. It's a case of, look what we're all going to get out of it, and I was going to improve the economy of the south-east region. John, you said most of it, so well done.
Thank you, councillor Moore. councillor Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the last week or so, we've had even more talk of, about local government reorganisation. This is probably the third iteration. And while all those various versions have been going on, the 10 local authorities in south-east Wales have quietly carried on collaborating in ever larger initiatives, this being the largest. But for this to work, it's not about what we get or what they get. As a local authority, we all know about the arguments we get between what Barry gets, what Penarth gets, what Cowbridge gets and what Lantwit Major gets. If you magnify that up to 10 local authorities, this will never work. I'm hugely pleased to have played a part, and I'm hugely pleased to see that many of the things that we argued for, the themes and the priorities, are still included in this business plan going forward. But I'll leave you with a quote that I came across today and just reread it, that by the strength of our common endeavour, we achieve more than we achieve alone. So it's to create for each of us the means to realise our true potential, and for all of us as a community, in which power and wealth and opportunity are in the hands of the many, not the few. That will be very relevant to the people sitting around me, but if anybody else would like a membership card, very welcome.
Thank you, councillor Burnett. Leader, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everybody who's contributed tonight. Neil did mention, and I'd already mentioned, the 500 jobs in the semiconductor cluster, and it is important to note that those jobs are double the average salary of jobs in the area. You know, they're good jobs, they're not just any jobs, and well worth having. I'd like to thank Liz for bringing up the subject of local government reorganisation, and I think the fact that the 10 councils in the south-east Wales area are working together so well on city deal is a really good argument against local government reorganisation, mandatory reorganisation. When it suits us, we've always said, and the previous administrators have always said, we're willing to collaborate and we'll do everything we can to work together to make things better for the residents and citizens, but we don't want mandatory local government reorganisation, don't see the need for it, don't see the point of it, don't see the benefits of it. But this sort of thing, this working together, really does benefit everybody. I've got nothing else really to add. Thank Gwyn for his comments. Thank everybody for their contribution. I hope that we'll have a unanimous vote tonight. The important thing is that we get it through, but it would be nice to get a unanimous vote to show that this council is firmly behind the city deal. I think most of the other councils have had unanimous votes, the ones that have gone up until now. I hadn't heard about the Bridgend vote until it was mentioned tonight, but. I hadn't heard about the Regend vote until it was mentioned tonight, but, so with that, I think we can put it to the vote and I hope we get a unanimous support.
Thank you, leader. All those in favour of the recommendation, can we have a show of hands, please? That's unanimous, that's passed. Thank you all very much. And before you leave, can I wish you all a very happy Easter and a blessed year? Thank you.